I was opposed to the theory of inheritance tax, but then we realized that we average between two and four hundred thousand dollars a year in inheritance tax. Thanks. Think about Monson, right? Monson got about three million a year, all because of Heather Hill. That would make sense.
Andy Bushman's mom.
I grew up in Monson Township. Andy Bushman's mom, Jane Bushman was trustee.
Bill White Towns.
I thought she was the mayor of Monson, right?
Maybe a boy scout.
As soon as they built Heather Hill out there.
She had brilliant idea, someone from the best, when someone would check in there, she'd have some contact there with both registration. So when they passed away, it was inheritance tax.
Yeah, and it doesn't take much.
That's why they have a time department and all this stuff.
Right?
Right.
They have any money? No, because I went over to Monson.
Do you need a refill or anything?
Pick up stuff.
Okay, so you can do whatever you need.
Does it matter where we sit?
Anywhere you'd like. The anybody's in H staff will be here in the tables, everyone else will be in the chairs. So.
We have little town hall, you know?
Yeah.
Meeting rooms and fire department. Same with Clarendon. Clarendon's got a pretty nice township. Well, they, that's because their forefathers had the brilliant idea of actually building one. We built ours like a century ago. Ours was first was built.
They have a town hall for the first hundred fifty years.
Oh, remember, remember, we were, I mean, we were sharp until eighteen forty-seven. Eighteen forty-seven, the village broke off, they seceded. So, I don't know what they did earlier, but I know like in the sixties, seventies, they would meet at trustees' houses.
See, Burton Township would meet at the fire department upstairs at the fire hall. But they were known for locking doors. Of course, you don't want any, you don't want any public input in that.
Well, the three open meters. Ah, look at these plain codes guys coming together and everything.
Where's the heckling department? They're holding in, so back here. Oh, yeah, for that walk up the steps, you deserve it. He says bronchitis, like on their hands, so it'll be fun. Where are your reserves? Take your hand for it.
With the low buck, that's where you should sit.
See, she's doing it, look at that.
Bathroom, now's the time.
Things considering. Everybody will use the restroom. Right, we'll call it a hand soap is.
How are you doing? How are you?
Yeah.
Yep.
Hi, how are you doing?
I'm doing well. Doing well. How are you doing is the question? Fantastic. What are you gonna do there on Ledge Road?
It's property.
Oh, sure, how are you?
Hazardous, yeah.
Get us a balcony and relax for a change, or I'm sure that everything will be smooth with you guys in charge.
That was a joke. That was a joke.
They busted the pot farm, I don't think, much there. No one's asleep, yeah.
Oh, yeah. No, it's just, just for family.
Go ahead.
And the Lawsons are really, really good neighbors.
Quite a place.
The pot farm, just for.
I'm good, how about you?
John County Insurance, U.S. Marshals busted the pot farm in Thompson a few years ago.
Oh, okay.
I bought the property. So Irwin was questioning what I was.
If I gotta take your lease, it's a cool thing.
Get the gang back together.
I didn't know what happened. We had a bonfire, all everybody wanted a Doritos.
Yeah. It used to be, it was a junkyard, and then they were growing pot out of the building. So now it's got a thirty-six by hundred and twenty-eight foot steel building with concrete flooring in it. It's huge. It was thirty-seven acres. They weren't growing pot, it was property all on the building, but. How are we doing, Ruth?
So you got all the electricity you'll ever need.
It's wired for four hundred amp three phase. Oh, yeah, that's how they got.
That's all you only get.
Be illuminated.
That's how the guys in, there was a one in Burlington Glen.
Yeah.
Those newer condos.
Yeah.
Guy bought the thing, just stripped every, took all the furniture, everything out of it, and was growing weed in every room. And that's how they got caught. And they had even bypassed and brought in additional power. This, and I don't know how you hijack a hot line like that.
When the power's living the dream yourself. And it's okay.
That's a dream.
You can hire contractors and just pay them more than what they're asking to keep quiet. That's, it's crazy.
Because there's no cellphone reception in the building, there's the wifi and the password so that y'all can have at least some connection to the.
That's always kind of nice.
I get some that are panicked and some that don't care, so.
I have a relative.
You can wifi calling that, you can do stuff. You can sit here.
You're the first one to get it on the bus and the first one to get it on. No way this could be as live. I don't say that. Good for the community. Sure, sure. That doesn't fall on you. We had a trustee back in the eighties who promised to put in sidewalks.
Well, this is.
They talked to the engineer, and the engineer said, this is back in the eighties. That's the question, is who is that gonna fall on? Because, because the new school's in the township and the village is closed, but a village may take the village sidewalk, but it would be just, um, basically the, the north section of the fairgrounds, and then a three resident houses there between the school and the fairgrounds, so. But then back to the school.
Well, you know, the next, the logical. The logical progression that they're gonna go to is the annexation.
Uh, it's a jet agreement.
Oh, and then you've got, you've got a bond in there.
Yes. Like I said, there's plenty of words I believe, I don't know, I can't speak all of them, but it's already been discussed.
Uh, there's generally no cellphone reception in the building, so the wifi and the password's up here, so you can still get access if you guys need it.
There's a better way, there's a better way that's.
Chris Grau.
Chris Bra.
Okay, I'm Jonathan Typer, I'm with Clarendon Township, and I'm the chairperson here. You know Colin Watson? He's on.
I'd like to see him at council at some point.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see that too.
He was, he was talking to the last guy through.
Oh, you? Jim? He's got, he's got. I'm Jonathan Typer.
Jimmy, how you doing?
You're on.
My friend out there flying ultra light, you see him?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, of course. I know you, Jim, and I didn't recognize you.
Is that him?
Well, when I left the square about an hour ago, his ultra light was on.
They take out all the turnouts. Three of them.
So my, a good friend of our family, who I've known since, really, as a kid, he flies too, but he crashed about a month ago. He did, and separated his shoulders or something. And I was, you know, this, if that's who I'm thinking, that's Kyle Martin, so he's the city councilor. I don't get it.
It's a strove engine on the back, and a little fly.
The goal was to set the table, so we were down, his wife and I were walking the fairgrounds two months ago, and there was some guy flying, and that was the guy that I knew that crashed, and he showed us the whole scene. I really wanted to see, I wanna see it take off.
Council, council, can everybody move up a table? We have a low turnout for council. We'd like to get the council up closer.
See? See?
Oh, I was gonna sit right there.
I was in the first.
The casket rag?
I was in the back and moved up too.
Keep an eye on that guy. Okay, but then next to you?
Well, it's good, that's an incident.
Oh, yeah, it is. Are you on a comfort, or are you?
I'm making my way to my work right.
Humble attitude.
Uh, I'm actually gonna pull up my screen, because we don't have. The only place to handle it is where I concentrate.
All right, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Welcome to Clarendon Township. There it is out the window. It is seven oh one P.M. I'd like to call this the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two special meeting of the Jocko Public Health Advisory Council to order. I stand for the pledge, and there is our pledge.
In just the blood of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, with that, we are going to, uh, call the roll. We need twelve, with our twenty-two members of this council, which means we need twelve, we need quorum. To my immediate left, Mr. Brown, he is going to, uh, call the municipality. If you're here from that municipality, please state your name and your title. Okay? Everybody understand? Mr. Brown, when you're ready.
All right, Auburn Township. Bainbridge.
Michael Bates, trustee.
Burton Township.
Dan White, township trustee.
Chester Township.
Ken Reitke, trustee.
Sharton Township, Michael Brown, trustee. Clarendon Township.
Jonathan Typer, trustee.
Hamden Township. Huntsburg Township.
Jason Sutter, Huntsburg Township trustee.
Middlefield Township. Montville Township.
Tricia Combs, trustee.
Monson Township.
Jim Otasky, trustee.
Newberry Township.
Bill Scamrock, trustee.
Parkman Township.
Joyce Peters, trustee.
Russell Township.
Jim Mueller, trustee.
Thompson Township.
Irwin Luffel, trustee.
Troy Township.
Sharon Sims, trustee.
Village of South Russell.
Bill Coons, mayor.
Aquila Village, Chris is the shop councilman. Village of Middlefield. Village of Burton.
Ruth Scambs, mayor.
City of Sharton.
Chris Grau, mayor.
And county commissioners.
Uh, he's not here, he's on his way.
Okay. One, two. We have seventeen.
Mr. Brown, do we have quorum?
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, uh, I am Jonathan Typer, I am on the chairman of this council. To my near left is Mr. Michael Brown, he is a secretary of this council, and to my far left is Adam Licky, he is the Jocko Public Health Administrator. I first want to thank council members for your service, um, to this committee, as you represent your individual municipalities. Thank you also to Jocko Public Health, to Adam Licky, Commissioner Dr. Cameron, who is here, excuse me, the health board and the rest of GPH staff for hosting this meeting, and for your purpose, Phil, service to this department. Uh, before we get started on, on the purpose of this meeting, I would like to yield five minutes to Mr. Licky. Uh, he is again the GPH administrator, he is going to update us on the latest news. Floor is yours.
Uh, thank you everyone for coming out, we really appreciate it, it's a late night, so we've got cookies, coffee, water, pop, and you can imagine, it's here, right?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, anyone that comes up to speak tonight, we're gonna come up to the podium to speak, uh, we do have one of the team here, uh, recording.
Uh, we do have one of the team here, uh, recording the, uh, the meetings. Uh, we have seen it at our, at our public health meetings here from the auditor's office. They help provide that. Uh, so I'm gonna come up here that way, not turning the camera back and forth, left and right. Um, couple of quick things, just this last time we've all met, which really wasn't that long ago, honestly. Uh, we made the per seale property, uh, program optional. We're working to finalize an operation and maintenance program, uh, to bring the health department to state compliance, which is required to do. Uh, we're improving relationships throughout the county. I think, you know, I've spoken to a number of you and most of you have seen that. I think we're gonna look better with, um, working with those air rail throughout the county. Um, we did accept recently a grant between Jogga Public Health and the Ohio EPA slash governor's office for well drilling in Parkman. Uh, Joyce is here. She was actually out here Friday night, uh, for a special board meeting. Um, we've been able to work with, uh, Henry, the Parkman team, Mike Derrifield, and, uh, due to some contamination in Oakford Parkman, we were to get a very unusual grant from Ohio EPA and the governor's office to allot. The first grant is three hundred thousand dollars to drill, to drill new wells in Parkman for the residents that are affected, uh, which is obviously huge news for the, for the residents, not only Jogga Public Health, but it'll help out the residents in that way. Um, we started working with the Board of Mental Health, uh, specifically Amy Martin Durenzi over there for Narcan distribution. As you've probably all noticed, we have a huge drug epidemic throughout the, throughout the nation. Um, and actually right after one of our meetings we had, it was a community, community type of an event from with churches. Uh, we actually had someone pass away from drug overdose in one of the churches literally the next day. Um, so we were able to issue out, um, one hundred and ninety-four Narcan kids just this year, which is, um, about sixty more than, sixty-one more than all of last year combined. Um, we have our health educator, he got more, more, more interaction with the public, providing insight that way, taking feedback back, um, in that manner. Our epidemiologist has been helping with our community health needs assessment with Jogga U H, which is required every five years. Uh, we have a new website that we're gonna be ruling out, uh, that you'll all be able to see, which is gonna be far easier for the public to use, interact with, and hopefully eliminate some of the in-person if they would rather do something online to save time with money and gas and anything else. It'll help alleviate some of those two hardships. Uh, we brought GPH into compliance with the state campground inspections, which we're not in compliance with. And we also brought GPH into compliance with House Bill one-ten, uh, which we are not in compliance with as of this year as well. So we're now in compliance with both of those. Um, lastly, a huge thank you to the board and Dr. Cameron. Uh, we do have Rich Perano here and Carol, uh, Carol, uh, Carol Braekey and Dr. Cameron. Uh, if you three would like to stand, Richard is standing, but, um, we're, we're very indebted to them with some of the school guidances coming out, some of the changes it made throughout the health department. We're very much indebted to those two. Uh, Lynn Roman was not able to be here tonight, nor was Ashley Jones, but they've been instrumental as well. Uh, and then, uh, lastly, uh, one thing that was brought up by someone here that they just mentioned to me was there's the rumblings, which we actually addressed in one of our public health meetings, um, about Lake and Jogga. And, uh, there's no, there's no merging or anything like that going on or any intentions of that. But that was something brought up by someone here to ask me that question. I said, I'd gladly address it, uh, with everyone here. So that's kind of what's going on with, with Jogga Public Health since the last time we all met, which really wasn't that long ago. Um, but those are kind of the updates. So I'll hand it back over to Mr. Tyber. Start with me.
Thank you, Mr. Licky. That's, uh, good news indeed. I really, you know, paid attention to GPH and, uh, they really are very intentional and purposeful, uh, and, uh, and, and, and they're, they're initiative driven, uh, the best for the betterment of the county. Uh, so I appreciate the update. Per Ohio revised code three seven oh nine point oh three A, this council is made up of one elected official of every municipality in the county. Namely, uh, the mayors, uh, and the, uh, the villages in the city and the, uh, uh, chairperson of the board of trustees from the townships. There are twenty-two members. Each member represents the constituents of her or his municipality. The purpose of this meeting is to fill a board seat made vacant by the departure of former board member, Dr. Patricia Levann. Per Ohio, Ohio revised code three seven oh nine point B, every local health district within our great state must have a minimum of one licensed physician. Dr. Levann's departure leaves this board with none. Therefore, both our candidates here tonight are current licensed physicians. Further, per, per Ohio revised code three seven oh nine oh three B, this council has a screening committee. Screening committee is made up of five members of this council. The screening committee met last Wednesday evening at seven o'clock P M. to interview each candidate. The scheduled interview time for each candidate was twenty minutes, uh, per candidate. The purpose of the screening committee is to interview and recommend a candidate to the full advisory council, which we are prepared to do tonight. And that will be revealed just prior to the vote. Uh, this screening committee this year, uh, for this purpose, uh, were myself, trustee Joyce Peters of Parkman, trustee Jim McCasky of Monson, councilman Chris Alucia of Aquila Village, and trustee Ken Racte of Chester Township. The screening for many of these recommendations, as I said, will be revealed just prior to the vote. So here's how this is gonna work. The procedures. Each candidate will have three minutes to present her and himself to the council and public. The candidates, the candidate who applied first may choose which order he or she wishes to present. In this case, Dr. Dr. Rude applied first. Dr. Rude already informed me, he respectfully yields the first slot to Dr. Schuback. So three minutes, each candidate will present themselves. This will be followed by up to five questions. I know I'm intending to say five minutes, but up to five questions from council members. I ask candidates to try to keep your answers precise and on topic relative to the specific question. Candidates will not hear each other's presentation or, uh, the question and answer section, okay? Uh, they will be, uh, vacant from the room. After the questions by council members, the public will have opportunity to express support for a candidate via one-minute public comment. The public comment will not include speaking directly to a candidate or really any person here. Okay, everybody understands? So three-minute presentation for each candidate, uh, up to five questions by council members only, up to five questions, and then one-minute public comment. All right? So these time limits will be held to. They're gonna be on the screen. You'll be able to see them and, uh, uh, and, uh, so it'll be easy to follow. I will explain the voting procedure just prior to the vote, if that's okay with everybody. I want to thank Dr. Rude and Dr. Schuback for your sense of duty and interest in the health of our county. With that said, Dr. Schuback. The floor is yours.
Dr. Rude leave.
Dr. Rude, yep. You leave me up. We will start. We need some walking music. Anybody?
I have a tiger.
I have a tiger. Dr. Schuback, we will start the three-minute time once you begin. Thank you, doctor.
Thanks so much. First of all, I want to thank you all for considering me. Um, I'm not a politician. I am a physician. However, I have a deep interest in, in the, uh, this county. I grew up in Cleveland on the east side and, uh, was educated, um, in Cleveland primarily. And then I went to high school at a private school, which was a, a, a huge thing for me, but, um, got a scholarship and then eventually went to, uh, to Yale and then came back and went to medical school in Cleveland. Um, I always wanted to come back home. I have a child. I'm a single mom, so I, I understand how it is to, to be in dire straits, but still, you know, continue your career. And despite, you know, leaving her alone and not making her cookies when she came home from school, I think she had a pretty good upbringing. She went to class a lot with me. Um, so I'm very deeply interested in the health of the community. Um, of course, I'm an OBGYN, so, um, the health, uh, women's health is, is my utmost concern and, and interest in what I do as a profession. I was at Metro Health for thirty-two years, um, had retired, but trained a midwife at the Middlefield Care Center. So she and I partner, um, along with Dr. Cameron, um, at the Middlefield Care Center, doing obstetrics for the Amish community, low-risk Amish community. I also work in, um, one thirty-five, I'm just looking at this. I'm used to talking a lot with my patients. Um, and, um, I do weekends at, uh, to keep my other skills, my gynecology and surgery skills up, um, at Cambridge at the southeastern Ohio Medical Center down there. Ohio Health, um, has the, under their auspices. Um, but my heart and soul are, are here. And I moved here in two thousand and seven after being a lifelong visitor with family who lived in the house that I now occupy. And, um, of course, to both, um, public health, mental health, and environmental health are my key, uh, interests. And, uh, I know there are a lot of issues around the environment and, um, coming out here and thinking it's pristine, but we do want to make sure that we, we are cognizant of, of how we affect the environment, um, recycling and water usage and, and, um, now how, uh, we're upstream from Lake Erie, so everything we do here, you know, we, we can't always see what, how it affects, um, us immediately, but we want to make sure that we are doing our part to make sure that we are, um, keeping the environment as, as healthy as we can. Um, and I guess what better way than to be in a governing body that, that can help assess all of those things? And, um, primarily, I am a physician, so that is my area of expertise. Three minutes.
Dr. Schuback, thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, I'm not gonna start.
Oh, I'm sorry. The five, the five minute questions. Don't even know my own agenda. Okay, uh, uh, council, do you have any, uh, questions for Dr. Schuback? Please.
Well, I'll start off the form then.
Okay.
Um, one of the main responsibilities of the Board of Health, uh, deals with people when they have their own environmental issues on their properties for septic systems. Are you familiar with the workings of those and the dilemmas?
Yeah, I'm, I have a septic system myself. I'm very cognizant of that and, and, you know, getting inspected and pumped and I have a leach field. I don't have a tank and, um, but I do know it's something in the Ohio revised code about, um, responsibility for septic systems and, um, inspections and.
Okay.
Everyone's responsibility for, yeah, I mean, I think that's a huge issue. And I've heard about the Parkman issue with the salt storage and, you know, contaminating the aquifer. And I'm glad to hear that they, that they have joined with the EPA to remedy that and hopefully move where the salt is, so it's not uphill from.
Still trying. It's always. Still trying.
Yeah, so it's like.
Any other questions from the council? Yes, Mayor Coons.
What will the people at the, um, Middlefield Care Center, what would they say about you? They're going to describe you.
Well, I hope in favorable terms. Um, I think I'm, I, as a physician, I work with a midwife, so I'm, I think I'm a gentle, caring physician that's more midwife than physician. But, um, I can, I have the skills that are a little bit more advanced than a midwife, so I can do something more, um, advanced and also recognize quicker an emergency when a patient needs to be, um, transferred. But I get along very well with my patients. I mean, I live near some of them. I've delivered some of my neighbors and, uh, we have returned patients, so are coming to us again for their second baby. We started delivering together, um, to June of twenty twenty and during the pandemic. And of course, we got busy because a lot of the Amish didn't want to go to the hospital and get tested. Um, but we did enforce, you know, making sure that none of us got sick and, and making sure everyone stayed healthy. So I think, I think they like me.
Thank you.
Uh, room for three more questions. Council?
Come on.
Mr. Whitey.
Yes, Mr. Whitey.
Um, I have to, my question is, um, how do you think the, I understand, I think it's wonderful that the work you're doing out there on five twenty-eight. Uh, but I'm wondering how, what do you think you can do for the opioid problems in the county? I know it's a tough one.
Well, it's, I, I think that it's a tough question for anyone dealing with it.
Yes.
I mean, obviously having Narcan is a bandage, but we have to try to see, you know, how people are accessing this and why. And, you know, a lot of people blame physicians for starting this, but you have to understand that some patients do have, have pain issues and it's difficult to, um, I think, assess in some of our situations who is going to be abusive or not. I think some of us have a good feeling about who will be a pain medication abuser. And, um, it's, it's just a, sometimes a judgment call that you do your best to counsel these patients and, and give as few medications as you can within like post-surgical, you know, pain medication. But I, I don't do rehab. I, um, we certainly had a lot of patients at Metro who were in rehab and had to have people, you know, women on Suboxone and babies staying and, and with withdrawal and things like that. So, um, counseling and being open-minded and not shutting them out, not making them pariah, is, I think that's, that's, it's easy for us to like. They don't want to talk to a drug addict, but it's, it's important to communicate.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Whitey. Uh, two more questions. Mr. Alucia.
Um, as you may know, uh, during the coronavirus pandemic, a lot of public interest and scrutiny came on of Jogga Public Health. And hopefully that's all behind us, but I think it bears, uh, learning from the past two years. So my question is, in hindsight, do you believe anything could have been done differently in regard to mask mandates, mandatory lockdowns, and school closure policies at local, state, or federal levels?
I think that we had all those in, in place. Um, I certainly wore masks for two years and, and in any medical facility. Um, we were, um, using masks at the care center, um, with the patients without any, any issues or, or judgment. Um, make sure that if people had any, um, symptoms, that they report them. We all were tested. We were all vaccinated. Uh, we had to be. Um, I think that we don't have a good answer for, this has not happened in our lifetime. And so our, our best response to that was to protect as many people as we can. Therefore, we shut down schools. We did homeschooling. We, but, um, I don't think there was a, a right answer. I mean, every step of the way could be critiqued and for positives and negatives, but there's no like, oh, this was done great or this was done poorly. I think there are a lot of different levels of, of how it was managed.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner DeVore, before you begin, uh, please note, uh, Council Commissioner DeVore arrived at seven twenty and now our rates are up to eighteen. Correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioner, Commissioner DeVore, you're, uh, the final question for Dr. Schuback.
This should be a short answer. Are you for or against the Jogga County Dare Program?
Say again, please.
Are you for or against the Jogga County Dare Program?
Could you tell me what that is?
It's for, uh.
Drug awareness.
The, uh, school children. School children, fifth grade, and Sheriff Department runs it and, uh, for prevention.
And education.
And education and making sure that they try to make the right choices in life, not only about drugs and alcohol, but choices in life. Uh, and then get familiar with the police officer that they're not.
Absolutely.
You're in favor of that?
Absolutely. Anytime you can educate someone and make them, you know, aware of what law enforcement does, not just, you know, they're the other. And the more engaged, I think, the more we have people who are respectful of law enforcement.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council, for your questions.
Number five.
Thank you for the answer. That's five. Dr. Schuback, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Turn you from the public then? Public.
Have you seen the spread that Adam has for us? He, he, he told me it's back to three hundred. Yes. I touched it, so I had to take it. Ladies and gentlemen, introducing Dr. Mark Rude. Uh, Dr. Rude, uh, you have three minutes to present yourself. Appreciate your time and three minutes, uh, beginning from you beginning.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. It's been my privilege to spend my entire thirty-four-year career as a family physician, living and practicing in Jogga County. And for the past thirty years in an office that I built just over a mile from my home. I care deeply about the welfare of my patients and have been fortunate to be able to take some pride in believing that I have contributed to helping Jogga achieve its longstanding ranking as one of the healthiest counties in Ohio. So for instance, uh, in congestive heart failure. So for instance, in congestive heart failure, in the first 24 hours, you need to get fluid off. If that's not happening, your patient's not going to do well. For pneumonia, it's how you get antibiotics into the person's vein in the first four hours of their presentation to the emergency room. So understanding how to build a team and work as a team so that all members of the team know what the goals are, no one needs to be done, and know what to do if something goes wrong, can you anticipate what things would commonly go wrong, so you develop plans to be able to attack, attack that in advance, understanding that all members of the team are on the same page of the playbook. That's what I've done throughout my career. I developed 26 care pathways for Joga Hospital and seven care pathways for Hillcrest Hospital and several for University Hospital's health system.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Rappi. My question is, are you familiar, doctor, with at least some of the Joga Health initiatives, recent initiatives?
Well, I read your minutes for the past year, and I am aware that in addition to working on healthcare overall, you've developed policies for your school system for dealing with COVID, a lot of COVID work during the past couple of years. I know that a lot of your work involves also things beyond physicians' role in health. For instance, sewers, septic, I have a sewer, excuse me, I have a well and septic system at my home. I have a public water system in my building that I own, of which Cleveland State is a tenant.
Thank you. Any other questions on the council members? No? Yes, Mr. Lucio?
If you please, as a council, I'd like to ask the same question.
Yep.
As you mentioned, COVID brought a lot of scrutiny and public interest to Joga Public Health, and I, I think it's important to learn from, from what went on for the last two years. So the question is, in hindsight, do you believe anything could have been done differently in regard to mask mandates, mandatory lockdowns, and school closure policies at local, state, or federal levels?
I think when you're dealing with a situation where you know less than what you should about what needs to be done, we need to proceed expeditiously but cautiously. And I'm sure that there were mistakes that were made in the early days of the rollout that if the leaders could have gone back, they probably would have done it differently.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Lucio. Any other questions from the council? Yes, Mr. White?
I'm going to ask the same question I asked the other first candidate. What are your feelings on how we can combat this opioid problem and curtail it down a bit based on, you know, what's happened in the past, where we go from now on?
I, I think it's an incredibly lethal problem in our nation, in the globe, in the sense that the biggest game changer has been the appearance of fentanyl in pretty much everything. I have had a patient who died of a lethal overdose because he thinks Bud was buying apple off the internet, and he was actually buying pure fentanyl. So it's. I am familiar with the Dare Program simply because my kids went through schools, but I am going to plead ignorance in the sense that I actually haven't had any specific workings with the people in the Dare Program myself, so I would hate to render judgment about something that I don't know as much about.
But it's, it's more or less prevention. Any, to me, any classes that are for prevention of drugs and alcohol and just having their children make the right choices in life, that's, and it's a fifth grade class that is put on in this county and a lot of the counties.
Which seems to be a very reasonable thing to advocate for.
Thank you.
Thank you for the questions, Commissioner. With that, that concludes the question portion. Dr. Rude, you may find your seat. If somebody could get Dr. Schuback for a public comment, can I make your public comment?
I'll grab it. It was pleasant. I said that, I thought somebody grabbed you. Sure, I thought somebody's moved.
Of course.
So, come back down.
Okay, so for our two candidates, this is very charismatic for you, our two candidates, Dr. Schuback and Dr. Rude, because you're going to be here for a public comment, we're going to ask you to leave again for the console to deliberate. Public, we are not asking you to leave, okay, while, while the council deliberates prior to the vote. With that, we open the floor to any member of public for a public comment. Remember, you have one minute, and this is not to directly talk to a candidate or anybody, really, it's, it's to express your support for a particular candidate or, or your, your lack of support for both candidates, whatever, whatever it may be, okay? But, but we are John County, we are, we can say things that, that maybe other people disagree with, and we can still be kind about it. So let's, let's go there. Anybody from the public wish to comment?
I could never help myself.
Mr. Briggs. All right, Mary, Mary Briggs, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Paul, you, George. The times will begin, it'll be on the screen, it'll begin when you begin.
Good evening, HDAC. I had the honor to serve on this year board for 12 years and as recording secretary and to interview physicians one time in Munson Town Hall over a decade ago. We have two excellent candidates. I'm thrilled they applied, but I also want to thank all of you for serving your public as, and your constituents in your jurisdictions, looking after their health, welfare, and safety, zoning, and serving on this very important appointment board. And that's it. Thank you so very much for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Briggs, for the public comment. Anybody else? Nobody? Okay, with that, the console is going to deliberate. I am sorry, candidates, it's very charismatic meeting for you, it's just, get that cardio going. Get your steps in. Thank you, appreciate your patience. Okay. All right, console. We're in deliberation now, this is not an executive session. This is, you, you could, you can ask the screening committee, there's five of your colleagues that are part of the interview committee, you could ask them what questions they asked, what, what they, what, what, how the candidates answered. I will tell you that the screening committee is recommending to the full council Dr. Mark Rude, okay? And there's reason for that. So screening committee, could you stand up, please, so everybody knows who you are? Okay, so there you go, there's the screening committee, and you could, so ask his questions or talk, or you can, you can talk about what, what the two candidates said here tonight, okay? So we are deliberating with each other. Any questions?
I'll just beg your pardon, because I like Dr. Schuback, that she had the Amish connection in, in the women's health. I thought Dr. Rude had a little bit more leadership experience that he could bring to the board. We're kind of blessed that we have two excellent candidates, you know, applying for the job, and, you know, it's a little bit of a, you know, volunteer situation, and so we couldn't go wrong in either way, but I like the Dr. Rude's leadership that he could bring to the table.
I will share with my colleagues during the interview process, I feel like both candidates, the reason that I voted to recommend Dr. Rude is because I liked his answers better, okay, that's all, during that interview process. Some of the questions that we asked were, one, one member asked, do you, something like this, forgive me if it's not verbatim, do you believe that, or GPH are fans of public comment? Do you believe that public comment, or should public comment influence your, your, play a role or influence your policymaking within GPH? Okay, that was one of the questions. Good question, all right. Dr. Rude answered, yes, I do, but that's who I represent, the public, for John County. Okay, I like that answer. Another question that I asked was, both candidates were asking the questions, agree with me all the time. And he said, and, you know, I'm not their boss. I said, you meet them where they are.
Give and take.
It's give and take, right, give and take. And I like that answer. Dr. Schuback has a good answer too, but, but Dr. Rude, for me, anyway, it's just me. Anybody else? Screening committee, who stood up with you?
Just one quick minor comment, because I, you know, given the emotions that we've had in these meetings over the past year plus, I like his temperament, measured thoughtfulness, he's a, putting together a response for the questions, and you also tell that he doesn't even mention it tonight, he looked at the meeting.
I noticed that with both also, but I especially noted, they both did that. I want to single one out, but I especially noticed that with Dr. Schuback. She, one of, one of the, maybe the second or third question, she, she, well, even when I talked to her, she, she said, I asked about GPH initiatives, and she says, you know, I don't know, you know, but, you know, that kind of thing. So, yeah, neither one of them, both of them seemed very honest to me. Both of them, yeah, it's a good point. Anybody else? Anything about tonight, they said?
Whomever, whoever, whoever you was an HDAC pick, I've also, so Carolyn Brink is my first board member since I became administrator. I take them out to lunch, we go over all the things that GPH does, we kind of give them an intro to public records amongst other things. We also go over to, over that you're not a volunteer, that you are, although most of them choose to not be paid, you are an elected, or sorry, an appointed official, not elected, sorry, an appointed official, and that does come with responsibilities amongst other things. So they will get a, usually a two-hour lunch crash course. Lunch is the easiest way for me to get people to be with me, so.
I'll be with any type of lunch.
Jonathan always.
I didn't get a crash course with you.
So they, they will get that crash course with me beforehand, and that way they at least understand how they're walking into amongst other things, as well as how the board needs run in general. So I just make sure all of you know that whoever you do pick will get that crash course, they'll get brought in here and introduced to all the directors. Carol Stranero, Anderson Director is actually here, so nice to have her breaking. So we'll go over all that with them as well, so I just make sure it's clear that they're not just walking in, you know, getting thrown to the fire and no other expertise is involved.
Now, also, folks, colleagues, we, you know, keep in mind, the screening committee is recommending one candidate over the other, and that's Dr. Rude. That doesn't mean, of course, as you know, you don't have to vote for the, the recommendation. Last year, in fact, the council voted against the recommendation. So, so, but that, that is, that is our recommendation, and the screening committee, y'all confirm that? Say yes?
Yes.
The screening committee changed their vote by the time the meeting.
Unanimous, the screening committee was unanimous.
The screening committee was unanimous? Oh, yes, yes, right. I'm going to call roll call, the voters here.
The checkmarks, I was going to call the roll call.
I mean, the vote, that's.
I would appreciate that. I gotta do something, I'm just sitting here.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, Mr. White?
I thought that Dr. Schuback brought up some interesting points about the environmental end of public health, from recycling to our, our water to that, that area as well. That's my one comment.
Yep. Any, any, anything you can say off of that?
Is recycling something we do?
We, we don't specifically do recycling, but I, I think the general justice comment though was the environmental health perspective, but yeah, recycling is not something that we do. I don't think we recycle in a building, do we, Jim?
Pardon me?
We don't even recycle in a building, do we?
Come on. I'm going to tell you this, Holloway's district, it's, you can see it from the window.
Okay, I'll throw it over there.
She's going to put that in the paper, Jim.
That's not the answer to the question, though, do you recycle? Yeah, we recycle.
We will, we will be tomorrow.
Can I ask somebody, Mr. Prano? Yeah, so two candidates come back in.
And when everybody votes, so we don't have the same issue we had last year where we were trying to remember who voted where, or somebody else is doing it, I'm just going to put your votes up here for who it is. So you'll have Mr. Rude, Mrs. Schuback, staying or no vote, and then not present, obviously, is, I think we have four not present, is what we did the roll call.
I think we should be ready. Two, three, four, five.
That was because the jury was late.
Jim?
I counted eighteen there. Okay, oh, that's right, that's over there. I'm just going to call out the.
Mr. Brown is going to facilitate the vote.
I'm going to call out the name based on the attendance sheet here, so the first is Bainbridge Township. Bainbridge Township votes for Dr. Rude. Okay, Burton Township.
Dr. Schuback.
Chester Township.
Dr. Rude.
Sharton Township, Dr. Rude. Clarendon Township.
Dr. Rude.
Huntsburg Township.
They're not present.
Oh, Huntsburg Township votes for Dr. Rude. Am I going to pass?
Nope, you're good.
Okay, Munson Township, oh, wait, excuse me, Monville Township, I'm sorry.
Dr. Rude.
Munson Township.
Dr. Rude.
Newberry Township.
Dr. Rude.
Parkman Township.
Dr. Rude.
Russell Township.
Dr. Rude.
Thompson Township.
Dr. Rude.
Troy Township.
Dr. Schuback.
Village of South Russell.
Dr. Rude.
Equille Village.
Dr. Rude.
Village of Burton.
Dr. Rude.
City of Sharton.
Dr. Rude.
County Commissioners.
Dr. Rude.
I have sixteen for Dr. Rude, I have two for Dr. Schuback, and I have four not present, for a total of twenty-two.
How many for Dr. Rude?
Sixteen.
Okay. The tally is in, I'll say that per Ohio Vice Code 3709.02A, a Board of Health term is five years from the date appointed. However, per the same section, code section, or code section D, this board seat reflects the remaining unexpired term of the original board member, which ends in March of 2025, and this term is effective immediately. I want to thank both candidates. Dr. Rude, you are the new health board member to Joga Public Health. I'd like to make a motion, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sir, vote.
Ms. Wheeler, and a second?
Huntsburg Township.
Thank you, all in favor? All right, motion adjourned.
Please take two ten or fifty cookies. I'm going to Quorum, so I'm not taking them.